He is like a, basically a civil action. So I think, make ten, Tammy, he was against them.
Good evening. It is six o'clock. I want to welcome everyone to the January and first meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda for this evening is council reorganization. What is council's preference for president and vice president for two thousand?
I make a motion that Ward Byers be retained as the president for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. And vice president?
I'll make a motion for Les.
I'll second both.
Motion and a second to retain current leadership for two thousand and twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the December thirteenth minutes. Is there any discussion, changes, comments? Not all entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second.
Les, second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Eric Walsh and Tyler from, Kofel from Baker Tilly. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. He is careful to sit here.
Certainly, that's fine.
Evening, Eric Walsh, partner with Baker Tilly. Have Tyler Kofel with me and manager on our team as well. Think you all have in front of you a report dated January fourth. Couple of different things in your package. Do you see one that's from Baker Tilly in there?
Yes.
Yes, you should.
I've read that.
Okay. I'm gonna walk through just very high level with you, and then you have both rate ordinance. So, bear with me. I'm gonna take a few minutes to go through this in detail. So what we're here to talk about is a proposed water project. On page two of that report, if I just walk through it, there is three components to this potential water project. First is a well rehab. The largest component is a new water treatment plant. And then an alternative is a new production well, which is well number three. The town's retained Wesler Engineering as a consulting engineer on this, and based on their preliminary design estimates, they, with an allowance for construction contingency, estimate about a four, four and a half million dollar project for those three items. Now, well number four, sorry, well number three, as I said, is an alternate. Well number three, the current estimate is four hundred and ten thousand. So the way this will be bid is they will bid it all as one package with the well as an alternate, and then it's up to the council with the engineers and vice to take that bid or not. Bids will be received, everything goes forward, on February seventh. So right now, everything I'm gonna talk about tonight is based on the engineering estimates. We hope the numbers they provided are high enough in today's bidding environment. And they put in quite a bit of allowance there, just because bids have been pretty high in the recent projects they've worked on. If you'll then look at page three, obviously, if you're going to go and borrow, depending if you take the alternate or not, you have engineering fees associated, et cetera, that you'll be paying for out of the bond issue. So you would be looking at borrowing somewhere between five and five and a half million dollars. As the municipal advisors for the town, we've been working with both Kim, Ward, and the rest of your project team, Ice Miller, who provided the bond ordinance you have in front of you. And we've been negotiating with the state revolving fund for several months now. You guys submitted a preliminary engineering report and an application to the SRF. And the SRF, where you scored on their priority list, would be that you guys would go through what's called a pool fund with the SRF. What that means is the state of Indiana takes their triple-A credit rating and goes and borrows funds, and then loans those funds to you guys as the secondary borrower. It's the town program. You guys wouldn't have triple-A credit rating, obviously. So the state of Indiana, you can get a lower cost of borrowing by going that route. The last pool program the state did was about two months ago, and the interest rate was in the mid-four percent range. So, still a very low interest rate, but it's not the two, two and a half percent that we saw a couple of years ago. The other component to this, it's important to understand, is this project would qualify through that program for a thirty-five year loan. So, you're paying the loan off longer, but that, just like a home mortgage, lowers your annual payments, so your water rates can be set at a lower amount to afford those payments. If we tried to pay this back over twenty years or fifteen years, the rate adjustments I'm about to talk about would be materially higher. Okay, so we're, we're proposing to you tonight to pay for this project is really the most, from a rate payer standpoint, the most advantageous way to pay for this project. Okay? So on page three, I summarized both the base project and the base and alternatives. When you look at the base project, I'm talking about is if you don't do well number three, the base and alternative is if you also do well number three. Okay? Your, and just kind of cutting down to the very bottom, just to afford that four and a half, five million dollar loan, your rates will approximately have to double for the water utility. So what that means to the average resident and average residential customer, this is water only, remember, when they get their, what most people call your water bill, you have water, sewer, you guys have trash on your.
Trash, stormwater.
Storm, all those things. This is only the water component of that bill. It's very important to make sure people understand. A typical residential, two to three person household uses four to five thousand gallons. In the state of Indiana, I know there's people that use ten thousand, there's people that use two thousand. But, based on a four thousand gallon average, water bill only, that customer right now pays about thirty-one dollars a month on their water bill. Their rate, we are estimating would go somewhere in the sixty-five to seventy dollar range. Again, this is based on estimates. Bids come in on December seventh, then we'll recalculate those rates based on the actual bids. Bids come in lower, that rate adjustment comes down. Bids come in higher, that rate adjustment goes up. So tonight, you have in front of you, there's a couple of steps to keep the process moving, and just reiterate the timeline. You have what's called a bond ordinance. That's the big thick document, I think, sitting right here in the middle, about fifty some pages, with the red states on it. The bond ordinance is what Ice Miller, your bond counsel, prepared. This gives you the authority to borrow the money, okay? You'll notice in that bond ordinance, it approves a loan up to six point six million dollars. Now, we don't anticipate you're gonna borrow six point six. We just do that as a not to exceed. We will actually only borrow what your bids come in at, as needed. So this is a not to exceed. You will introduce that tonight, if you so choose, and then you will adopt that, if you choose, on February fourteenth. There's no public hearing related to that bond ordinance, okay? The second legal document I have in front of you is the rate ordinance. That's the smaller, four or five pages. That would need introduced tonight, as well. Then you would set a public hearing for February fourteenth, likely at six P M., same time as your, as your regular meetings. At the February fourteenth meeting, then, you'd have, you would have a public hearing where you'd open up for, for comments from the public, questions. We would be here. I would suggest we have the engineers be here to explain the need for the project, et cetera. After you close that public hearing, then, in your regular council meeting on February fourteenth, you can take action on that rate ordinance. Very important piece, you cannot borrow these funds without having the rates in place. You have to prove to the state you have the ability to pay the loan back for the next thirty-five years, so you have to set your rates at the levels needed to do that, which is what we're talking about tonight.
And then can then be adjusted if those bids come down?
That's a good point, Kim. So, the ordinance you have in front of you tonight for introduction is based on the engineering estimates, but actually inflated a little bit. At the adoption meeting on the fourteenth, we will actually hopefully lower those rates, all intents and purposes, to what bids actually mean, the rates you need to affect the project. The reason we're inflating the introduction a little bit tonight is because you cannot adopt an ordinance at a higher rate than what you introduced on first reading and advertised for. So again, the process will be, you're gonna introduce these higher rates tonight. There's gonna be an advertisement that Kim will put in the newspaper ten days before the public hearing. You'll have a public hearing. We'll have bids in place by the time the public hearing gets here, and then you will have the ability to take action on what we hope to be our below rates, based on bids coming in. Final piece, and I think it's very important, and we'll explain this at the public hearing as well, lots of charts, et cetera, to hand out, so people can see what this means to the average bill. We're proposing you split this adjustment into two phases. We know it's a large adjustment, so roughly in half, going from the thirty dollars approximately a month, the first phase would be effective upon adoption, so that's probably, if you do adopt it in February, or in February, excuse me, you'd be, probably your March bills collected in April, if that's unburdened. And then the second phase would be not effective until January one twenty-four. So, I know it's a seismic increase, that's maybe a little bit of silver lining to the rate payer, not hitting them all once and phasing it in over that period. That was a lot of information, but questions for us?
So, the process is we adopt the bond tonight? Issue tonight?
You can, I'm not an attorney, so I'll defer to your attorney. You can suspend the rules, though, since you have all three council members, and you could adopt the bond ordinance tonight.
Okay, so pass it on first, and then suspend it second, third?
Pass on second. The rate ordinance, you can't do.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. Okay, and then we would have a first reading in February for the rates?
You have an introduction tonight of the rate ordinance. Give the rate ordinance number.
Correct.
First reading. Set the, set the public hearing, and give it the ordinance number, and then you'd have your second final reading, I don't know if you'll do two or three readings here, at your February fourteenth.
We would do three. Yeah, okay. We could stretch it out if needed, or not? We would have to adopt and suspend in second and third in February, is the recommendation?
Yeah, I would recommend you do first tonight, so you can do second and third after your public hearing. The reason for that is, the state is likely going to do their pool program probably in the March timeframe, and we have to have the rate ordinance in place to be able to borrow from them.
Okay. So I need that document. Thanks, Terry. Okay, thanks. And then it will number beyond the rate ordinance.
Oh, you got that one too?
Yes. Okay. Any questions for our guests regarding this information that was just presented?
One more thing for the public that is here, and I'll reiterate this at the public hearing, too. Obviously, now it's a larger increase. We are getting a very attractive rate from the state. If, if you guys went to the market right now with your own credit rating, the interest rates would be at least a percent to two percent higher, which is a material amount of money, when you're talking four to five million dollars of borrowing.
Yep.
And second, we did go to state, we did look at different grant options, et cetera. We went down that road. I know, Ward, you're, you were involved in that as well. Were not able to procure grants from the state in this funding round, so really it was, here's your funding package. Move forward or don't, at this point. But we did, we did try those avenues as well.
So, what was the reason why there was no grants available?
The way the state revolving fund, which is where the majority of the grants, a lot of people have heard, you know, some of the federal dollars coming down through the Infrastructure Act, et cetera, that's trickling through the state revolving fund. They score every community that comes in for a loan or a grant through their program, what they call their project priority list. And those are things based on, not, not just rate impact, but where your end user rate ends up. So, even though this is a large impact for you all, there's a lot of communities that still have higher end rates than you would have. It also has to do with environmental needs, so communities that have agreed orders or something like that with I D M., et cetera, they're gonna score higher than, than the town would. And it also has to do with, in what somewhat hurts you guys, economic impact in terms of, like, needing household income, which Bourbon, compared to many communities, does have above the poverty rate, which there's a lot of communities that qualify higher than you that are at or below poverty rate.
And we did look at Okra, and that, that calculation was changing that monthly bill by no more than five dollars.
And it was gonna prolong us to move forward?
And it would prolong the, yes, it would prolong the project with no guarantee of, of receiving it either. So on the table is ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash one, it's just simply the bond, approving the bond issue, so that money could be, or can be, applied for through the loan.
Approving the bond ordinance does not mean you're issuing the bond. It gives you the authority to do it until you adopt the rate ordinance. You can't move forward with the bond, so. You have anything else on it?
No.
And adopting it doesn't lock you into anything other than.
It starts a ball.
It starts the process, yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one.
On first reading?
On first reading, yeah.
I second that.
Motion and a second to adopt two thousand twenty-three dash one on first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there desire to suspend the rules? Pass on second and third tonight, so it can move forward?
Would do that tonight?
You can on the bond ordinance.
Yes. The bond ordinance doesn't necessarily need to have the public hearing and the advertising, but the rate does.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass two thousand twenty-three dash one on second and third reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two thousand twenty-three dash two would be on first reading only, pending further adoption at the February meeting and a public hearing. Counsel's wishes?
Make a motion to proceed.
Prove on first reading?
Can you approve in that first reading?
You have, I defer to your attorney. You have to get it through the first reading.
Okay.
Yes, so that we can advertise. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to pass on first reading, two thousand twenty-three dash two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want to set the public hearing? It doesn't need a formal motion, but set the public hearing for the fourteenth to six P M. Set the.
Yep, that's fine.
So we'll prepare, and we'll get it over to your attorney, the notice of hearing for a review, and then once it's ready to go, Kim, we'll advertise that in the newspaper.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Valentine.
Appreciate all your advice and help.
Don't skip out on us. Do it later.
Will you send us a copy of the signed bond ordinance? We'll get it over to Lisa?
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is Greg Hildebrand from Economic Development. Hi, Greg.
Hello.
Welcome.
Um, yes, I just, main business tonight is, you have an agreement between, uh, County Bourbon and Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. There's parts to that agreement. You want to see, uh, community agreement that all communities and counties have signed. You guys have signed it past. And then there's some addendums, some additional items that you have requested. And quite frankly, I feel really positive about all those items on there, and I think you'll see in the next month, I've got a tax abatement I need to bring in, but I want to speak to all the council members in private about that. It's a five point eight million dollar personal property abatement that they're gonna be applying for. They are also eligible for a next market manufacturing grant, so we're working with the state on that. So, but I want to speak with you guys about that and get all that worked out ahead of time.
And, and as I think I've mentioned to, to the two of you, this is to be paid in quarterly payments based upon some performance.
Yes.
Key points is to, in this, assist in the development of some property out on Twelfth Road, and assist with other economic development matters, advertising economic development for the town on the website, and that type of thing.
And we worked with C T Palmer to get there with the state.
Thank you. I, I will say that, I know we've had discussions about this agreement, but I will say that we have seen more in just a couple of months out of Greg than we've ever seen out of his predecessor, so I do appreciate that. And I think that's important that the council hears that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the contract is for ten thousand dollars for the year, and I believe we're breaking that down, half out of redevelopment, half out of the general fund, to be paid on a quarterly basis, so.
That still has to be passed by the.
Yep, pending, pending passage of, of the redevelopment, is how we plan on doing that, so.
And we set up a meeting with them, just so you know.
Twenty-fifth?
Huh?
Twenty-fifth of January?
Uh, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
I dropped my pen over there.
So, anyone have questions for Greg, or questions about the agreement with economic development?
I don't.
Okay. Is there a motion on the contract?
The, the only thing, you know, Greg, I've talked to you about this before, but, you know, I think you're doing a good job, but, you know, just don't lose sight of a small towns. I think we've been, haven't been for the last couple of years.
Yep, I agree.
Not only working with C T Palmer, and also this other entity, but this morning, I've had some very, uh, what's it, we're constructive negotiations on some of this other, in the mindset.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that.
I make a motion to accept that agreement. I second that.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement for two thousand twenty-three with Marshall County Economic Development. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Well, thank you.
Reappointments. Attorney Alex Hoover, Police Chief William Martin, and Public Works Superintendent Roger Terry, as well as Heather Chup for the Matchit and Park Janitorial. Questions, comments, discussion on any of those? You want those individually?
Nope.
Okay.
You can do it as a whole.
Yeah, I know, every year we think about that, don't we? There he sits back there, really.
I love him, so.
It's not what you said yesterday, but.
I make a motion, if there has to be a motion, that we retain all those people in their proper positions.
Can I add to that motion?
It's Terry's motion.
I, I like to add to that motion that the redevelopment, keep the same people pending that they, except for the one that has withdrawn, that we keep those same people in the redevelopment commission.
Okay, so let's, let's get the vote done on the reappointments, so we have a motion and a second to reappoint all of our department heads. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The, the school corporation is going to be appointing a new non-voting member in February to the redevelopment commission, is what he's referring to. So, that's a school corporation appointment, so you want, you're asking us to?
Retain the same appointments unless they have not expressed that they didn't want it, so I would assume they'll keep it.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you need me to second you? All right, I do.
Motion and a second to retain the redevelopment commission members for two thousand twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Kim Berger, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Need approval of claims for the year end and the beginning of January twenty twenty-three, fifty twenty to fifty ninety-two, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
I make a motion to approve those claims for that amount.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims that submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You will all given copies of the appropriations, the revenue, and the fund reports as of year end of twenty twenty-two. Also, the reports that shows the transfers, that were all inner fund transfers, which is allowed through the D L G F. And the nepotism forms for twenty twenty-two were signed, the conflict of interest forms that are required by the state board of accounts. You guys all have those and sign them. There's just two cancellation of warrants that have not been, um, the checks have not been cashed from twenty twenty. One was from the water fund, one was from the general fund.
Okay.
In the amount of five hundred and fifty-five dollars and two cents. Other than that, after all the computer issues, we are into twenty twenty-three at the moment, and not going with it that way. Didn't have to call the software company one time today, so that's good.
You need a, you need a vote on the warrants?
Nope.
Okay, very good. I would like to, and I would like to point out to council that some year-end funds were transferred to the Rainy Day in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven twenty-two. The Rainy Day Fund now sets at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so in the event that we need that for any emergency, we, we are doing well there. So I want to thank Kim for seeing that that happened. Anything else? Okay, very well. Chief Martin, it's all you.
You have my monthly, yearly, and reserve report.
Thank you for that.
Also included is a letter, as far as our reserves, what they, the hours they've worked. I'd also love to request permission to hire Tim Hubbard as a full-time officer.
I make a motion to hire Tim Hubbard, pending your approval.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to hire Officer Tim Hubbard, who's a full-time police officer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Also, Alex, did you get my email?
Yes.
And that looked all right?
Looks good to me, yep.
Does the reimbursement form. I would like to, if it's all right with Kim, I'd like to just leave it with her, and when she, we sort somebody in, that's when I can have it.
Good.
And also, Indiana Law Enforcement Academy put out a statewide new pursuit policy and a use of force policy. I would like to adopt that in ours. I left copies with, on, with Alex.
Okay. What, in a nutshell, what's the pursuit policy?
Pursuit policy is basically everything that we've been doing, but now it's all in the wagon. They covered everything.
Oh, so they just sent out a, a model policies?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we don't need lights and sirens anymore, then?
That's what you need, right?
Just, do you want, do you want council, do you, do you need a vote on that bill? Or is it just an internal poll? You want to?
I would, I would like to vote.
So that's for the pursuit and the use of force?
Use of force, the difference with that one is they classify chokeholds as deadly force.
Okay. Tim, you've probably read that, Les?
I have not. I heard about it, but haven't officially read it.
Okay. Alex, have you been over?
I mean, I just got to N I S I.
Okay.
Have not, but I can, next meeting, or however you want to handle that.
How's coun, what's council's wishes to, on the new policies? They're from the academy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Personally, I think they should just be adopted.
Okay.
That would be my, I'd make a motion that we move forward with that.
All right, motion and a second to adopt the new pursuit policy and use of force policy presented by the police chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Anything else, chief? Thank you very much. Questions for the chief at all? Before we move on to Roger? Roger, you're up.
You know, the county reports. The only thing I got is the city council bid opening will be Friday, February tenth at fourteen, and that's for the, the big contract.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Chuck?
We had our plan commission meeting last night in V C A meeting. If you council members are ever available on those dates, I'd like for you to come and just see what, what we're doing. I think we probably have the best plan commission and the best V C A members that we've ever had.
Good.
They're well informed, they're very intent on what they're doing and understand, so I, I want to encourage you to come if you can. We have some cleanup properties and. We have some cleanup properties and things that we're continuing on. We have some of those in court through Alex, and we're starting to hear a lot back from those people.
Okay.
So I think it's been very positive, and you can just drive through and see the changes.
Are those still set for hearing in February?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, it's this month.
Oh, it's this month, they're set?
It's a week from Thursday.
Oh, okay.
The 19th.
Okay, my mistake, thank you. Questions for Chuck? Thank you, Chuck. Alex?
Well, I guess just to piggyback off what Chuck was saying, those are set for next Thursday. And I think that the, the plan was that Chuck was going to do a walkthrough to see how far along they have come. See if it's worth giving a little more time. I do know, in respect to the Congo residents, it sounds like there has been a lot of progress with his, especially. I'm not so sure on the Jackson of where he's at. But I know Chuck's been taking a look at that and get back with me, and then we could evaluate from there.
Okay. Very good. Do you have, do you have your contract for this?
I handed it to you.
Huh?
I gave it to you.
Of course you did. Oh, here? Oh, yeah, there it is. I'm sorry.
Everything stayed exactly the same, I just changed the dates.
Okay. Do you need a separate vote to approve the contract?
I don't think so, since we retained him at the beginning, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Just signatures and
Alrighty, there is Alex's contract for signatures, please.
I thought it was supposed to be reduced amount for free.
You'd think, wouldn't you, yeah?
I have enough of those.
All right.
What can be, what do you call that, a freebie?
Yeah, pro bono.
Yeah, pro bono.
Okay. Patrons' comments or concerns? Anyone here wishing to comment on any item, anything? Okay, hearing none, council members? You have anything to bring to the table?
I do not.
Last?
No.
Okay.
Another year. It's his, his birthday this next week.
Having
Tomorrow, I think it is.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Let's not have the embarrassment like last year at your birthday, okay? That was bad. I mean, all right. Having nothing else
You were gonna, yeah, I know, wasn't going to happen last.
Having nothing else on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.